Good morning, everybody. How are you doing? So yeah, so with no further ado, we will be, yeah, I'll hand over to you, Brian Brooks, to give us another view of how to manage risk for your community events. And I'm sharing the slides on your behalf, so I'll open it up there.
Lovely, Brian. Thank you. Yeah, just in case you don't know me, because I'm not famous yet. I'm Brian Brooks. I work for BHIB Insurance Brokers. We currently insure about 2,000 to 2,500 local town and parish councils. And we were still looking for more as well. My past history, I've only been at BHIB five years. Working backwards, I was the University of Warwick Insurance and Risk Manager for a couple of years, 13 years at Leicester City Council. I was also in charge of Coventry City Council as well for a year. And then previously, I've been a liability loss adjuster investigating fatalities and serious injuries for many companies, McDonald's, BP, Siemens, companies I mentioned like that. And I started in May 1979 at a company called Commercial Union in Coventry. And the only famous bit about that was the floor below me, Terry Hall from the Specials worked in a stamp and coin shop at that time. So been around a bit. When I was at Leicester City Council, the events that I was involved in, because we had Events Advisory Board, which was, you know, really, really useful. Representatives from the police, local ambulance service and various stakeholders. So we had Events Advisory. So some of the things that I dealt with when I was at Leicester City Council was probably the biggest one was the King Richard III burial or funeral procession, where my job, I was on the silver control, but I also had to look after 114 media companies from around the world. And we commandeered the TK Maxx in Clock Tower. So I could put them all in there and sort out where they were going to be positioned around Leicester City Centre. And we had hundreds of thousands of people attend that. I also was involved in the Summer Sunday Music Festival, which was an annual event, which unfortunately no longer runs, where I mentioned I met Phil, he's dead, John Lyden, sorry, getting confused. Also, the other events we had was Caribbean Carnival, which had particular problems, which I will mention during the presentation. St Patrick's Day, Bonfire Night celebrations and Diwali, where I did say on the internet that Leicester did the largest Diwali celebration outside of India, which I wasn't aware of that, but it is a large event, 40 to 50,000 people, and does get larger each year, which again causes a number of problems, because that's an event which is in a number of, it's not in a park or anything, it's on the streets. So that had particular problems with it. So the agenda today, which is the next slide, John, I'm going to, where do you start with something like this? You're running an event, you've never done it before. So where on earth do you start? So I'm going to talk about some of the things that you need to think about when you're running an event. I was going to say, if you've got any questions, there should be 10 minutes at the end, depending on how this goes. So I will answer the questions at the end. So where do you start? What assistance is there out there? Where do you get your assistance from in respect of running the event? I'm going to talk about the location as well. Why is it important that you go and have a look at the location before you start running the event? And also the size, the number of people that's going to be there. How do you know how many people are going to be there? And what complications does that then bring into the organisation of the event? Depending on the size, because obviously the larger the size, so the Diwali event started with 5000 or 10,000 people in Leicester, and the last count it was 50,000. And we know that because we had software put into the police helicopters, which could estimate the size of the crowd. I think we got a grant from someone to do that, probably I think it was the Indian government or something, to put that software in the police helicopters, because it was a non-ticketed event. So we did not know how many people were going to be there on the actual day. And it would depend on the weather and which person, which famous Indian actors we had attending, that kind of thing. So we needed to find out the numbers on that. So size is important. That sounds wrong. But size is relevant to the risk involved in these type of events. So if I move on to the next slide, which is, you know, where do you start with something like this? Well, I put on my slide early, start as early as possible. So if you're planning events now for the King's Coronation, unless it's a very small event, I would suggest, you know, you should have started probably last year or the beginning of this year. Things happen to frustrate you when you're running an event. People's diaries fill up and time goes quickly. So I always say, start as early as possible. Doesn't even matter if it's a year before. You can phase in and ramp up the meetings as you get nearer the event. But please start as early as possible. And then that gives you time to iron out any issues that may crop up as the event gets organised. I also state that you should have some sort of advisory group or committee together, rather than doing it all yourself. Obviously, again, it depends how big we're talking about, as to how many people you have on your group. But it's useful to get relevant people on your committee as soon as possible. Now, as I said, at Leicester City Council, we had emergency services and things like that, because we had really big, major events with a few thousand people on. But if you're talking of something where you know there will only be a couple of hundred or a few dozen, then obviously that group needs to be scaled down to take into account the risk. There'll be lower risks, hopefully, with a smaller number of people attending. Please make sure everyone who is on that group is relevant to it. And there's not someone who thinks they should be on it because they're important or whatever. The more people you've got on the group, the more difficult it is to organise meetings. And you tend to find meetings go on longer when you've got more people there. So really try and be tight as possible on who you have on that group to avoid people who just want to be on the committee for the sake of it. They don't actually add any value to it. Having worked at a council, I used to go to meetings not related to events, where there was 14 or 15 people sitting around the room and only five or six would actually say anything. I don't know what these other people were doing on the committee. They would turn up each event and never say anything. So really try and keep your group tight, so that you can, you don't have a problem trying to fit in dates for the people's diaries. And I put, get dates in your diary as soon as possible for all the meetings that you're going to have, so that you don't have problems where you have one meeting, say the next meeting is going to be such and such a date, and someone says, oh, that's my daughter's wedding, or that's, I've got to take the dog to the vets that day, or whatever. Get the dates in the diary from the start, from your initial meeting. It's going to be the first Wednesday of every month, or whichever way you do it. But make sure the diaries, dates are put in as soon as possible. And the other thing I put when you start is have a look at the location. You might think you know the location, but does everybody on the group know it? So it's worth having a visit out to look at the location in light of the event that you're going to be running there. So there may be natural hazards that, you know, you've looked on Google Earth that you can't see because it's cloud, a tree coverage or something like that. So what is there on the site that may cause a problem? Is there a water hazard? Is there a stream goes through it? Is there a pond or lake? Is there fencing that may become a hazard? If it's got barbed wire on, something like that. Until you look at the site, you would find it very difficult to start doing the risk assessment. You need to look at the location. Also, when you're there on the site, have a look at what's around you. You know, is there neighbours that would probably need to be consulted about the event? Is there good road access? Is there a place for parking? Look at all those things. And as I said, with the group, if possible, all go along there and get a good look. And then when you're talking about organisation of the event as you go on, you've all got it in your mind as to exactly where this is going to take place. I've got the next slide, John, a couple of slides headed. If you go to advisory group, that's the one, yeah. As I said, consider who's necessary in respect, so that diaries can be kept as straightforward as possible. And this is when you should be starting your risk assessment. Now, I will be talking about the risk assessment later on. And I have sent through one to go to everybody, which is fairly comprehensive. But I've only got on there the things that I would normally expect most events to have. So I will talk about the variances of that risk assessment when I get to near the end of the presentation. But you should be starting the risk assessment now, because there may be things that you need to do initially, such as the next thing I've put on there is notify stakeholders, who you should be notifying that you're having this event. Is road closure going to be necessary? In other words, you've got to start doing the paperwork with the appropriate departments to get road closures. And sometimes it can take a while to get those through. And there may be costs involved as well. So you should be doing some sort of budget thing at this stage as well, so you know how much it's going to be costing you. You should maybe notify local emergency services. They probably won't want to attend your meetings, depending on the size of it. But it's a matter of politeness, really, to let them know that on a certain date or dates, that you'll be running an event, which you're expecting a certain amount of people. As I said, they will then log it on their systems that on a certain date, you will be having an event. And if you're having road closures, that will be on their information in case they need to get an ambulance either to your event or through your event. So they need to know about all these types of things. Is there any other, I put notified local authorities. But if you're doing something in conjunction with another local authority, make sure that they're advised as soon as possible. When we did the King Richard III funeral procession, it went through something like 14 different local councils in the Leicestershire countryside, like Market Bosworth, obviously. So we needed to keep in touch with all them as to what they were doing in regards to their risk assessment, road closures and first aiders and ambulances and all that kind of thing. So notify those people who are going to be involved as soon as possible. And I mentioned also the surrounding areas. Some events, you may need to put letters through the door to advise locals that you're going to be running an event. You may start getting people complaining or asking questions, but that's better than them causing a problem on the day or a few days before the event. So get notifications out to people as soon as possible. They may need to move their car on a certain day. And we know how people can get involved, personally involved, when they've got to move their car away from where they normally park it, that kind of thing. So as early as possible, start notifying those who are going to be affected by your event. I've mentioned location on the next slide, and this is obviously very, very important. Every location where it's a park or a street or whatever has different features on it, whether they be street furniture, or as I mentioned, trees, fences, that kind of thing. So you need to have a look at, are these things going to affect your event? Or do you need to put in barriers, that kind of thing, to stop people drifting off into a local stream, that kind of thing? And parking as well, is it a hard surface or is it a soft surface? Because then you need to factor that into your risk assessment. That's not only will you need to look at the weather for the events that you're running, but also it may cause a parking issue. So will you decide to have a reserved parking area in case of bad weather? It may be a bit further away, but it's better than having to get attracted to pull a load of vehicles out of fields and things, because there's been a sudden downpour. The field's turned into mud. So again, I put on the risk assessment about whether, weather's not just about raining on people and things like that, it's how it's going to affect people getting to the events. So have a look at those kinds of things when you're at the location. I've put notify local residents, it's very important. We get, when we run events at Victoria Park in Leicester, so we'd have mainly music events there, but some religious events as well. We always got complaints from neighbouring streets about the noise that there was going to be and objections and that kind of thing. So let the residents know as soon as possible, so you can placate them. And what Leicester City Council did in the end was give away a few number of free tickets to those who were nearby a certain area. I don't know what, you know, people would have, we had a Kasabian concert, so we're giving free tickets out to a care home there. And I thought, I can't imagine any of them going along to it. But that's the kind of thing, to try and placate people, so that you had an event where there wasn't complaints and it ran smoothly. Also, other things, I mentioned parking as well, but also disability access. I've been to a few events where disability access has been left to the last minute. And therefore, the access hasn't always been great. And again, you don't want bad publicity. If this is something that you're going to be running regularly, or you already run regularly, then the local press tend to like a good story where an event goes wrong. And if disabilities are involved, then they do make a story out of it. And you don't want bad publicity. You don't want a perfectly well-run event, and then it gets marred by a bad story in the paper. So do think about disability access as soon as possible in respect of where, depending on what the event is, where the stand is going to be for them to be able to view the concert or the parade, or whatever it's going to be. And also disability parking, where they're going to be able to park as well, so they can get to their access point easily. So again, think of things like that as well when you're running an event. I'm going to move on to the next slide now, John. Number of attendees, maximum capacity. Now, great, if you've got an event in a village hall or in a concert venue or something like that, and you're going to know the maximum number that you're going to have, because from your fire regulations, you're going to know that the maximum people you can have in there is X, and therefore you sell tickets up to that number. But what happens if you're running a free event? Like the Caribbean Carnival was a free event in Leicester when it first started, and it was on a field. But as it grew in its success, people were coming from further afield. We did not know how many people were going to be there. So it was very difficult to get the infrastructure, you know, the number of toilets, the number of emergencies, ambulances, emergency services, that kind of thing, because we did not know the number. So to get around that, we made it a ticketed event. So although it was free, you still had to have a ticket. And then that meant we had to put up fences, so people didn't just turn up and go, well, it's a free event, I'm coming in. Again, there was a number of problems at the gates, because people, it's a free event, they assume they can just turn up, but when it's ticketed. And it had to be ticketed, because it was growing in number, and the park where it was held could only have a certain safe number, because there's a fairground there as well and stalls and things like that. So there was a limited space, so we needed to know. So if you're running a free event, and you are worried that the maximum number may exceed what's capable for that area, consider doing some sort of ticketing system, even if it's free ticketing, to ensure that you know the number that's going to be there, and it doesn't get out of hand. Because if you've got people spilling onto roads, parking and upsetting neighbours and things like that, and the people themselves getting upset because they can't get into the event, it's useful to have a ticket system to control the numbers. And this helps with crowd management. So crowd management, depending on the number of attendees, do you have an ample number of volunteers? There are crowd management companies that we used to employ, who are a professional outfit that can assist with the organisation, so they should be coming to your event meetings as well. Obviously, there's a cost involved in that, but if you've got a large event, then it's probably worth getting some experts in who can help with car parking, with crowd management, with entry exit and that kind of thing. And these people also just roam around the site, seeing if there's any issues. So consider crowd management companies if the event is of that certain size. Barriers and signage, consider what, again, this is why you need to go to the location, so you can see what kind of barriers you're going to need to segregate people from cars and contractors' vehicles and that type of thing. So you need barriers, you need signage, so that people know where they, how they get into the event, how they get out, where the emergency exits are, that kind of thing. So all these things need to be taken into account when you're considering running an event. And also on the budget side of things, because you've obviously got to hire barriers, fencing, terrace fencing or whatever you need, and signage as well. May need to be specifically prepared for the event. Again, a cost to that, but it's really an essential part, so people know where to go in the event of a problem. The, trying to think of the other event we had, yeah, with Diwali, we had to, we, such a vast number, 40, 50,000 people, we couldn't ticket the event on that. So we needed to know the numbers. And as it continues to increase, there are other things that are going to come into effect in the next few years at Leicester City Council, to try and limit the number of people, because it's a victim of its own success, really, in that it became like the Notting Hill Carnival, where more and more people were coming through from around the country. And it was in a number of just streets and main roads and things, which we had to close more and more off to make it a safe event. So it is important that you know the amount that you're going to have. So we moved on to the other slide, which I've put on there, volunteers is the first thing. It's great to have volunteers, obviously, money's tight, always has been with councils. So volunteers are great and like gold dust. But what you should also make sure you're doing is provide training for them and whatever personal protective equipment they may need. High vis, obviously, is the one that comes to mind. But particularly, depends on the circumstances, they may need something else. But high vis is normally the one. But they do need, they do need training. We did an event at Leicester City Council of a major tree planting exercise in a park. And we got loads of volunteers through the local newspaper. And we had someone who dug a hole and stood back to admire their hole that they dug and fell into someone else's hole that they'd done, and did the ligaments in their knee. And that then ruined the skiing holiday that they were going to be going on. There was bad publicity through that, because they went to the local papers to say how they were injured. And the fact was that no one had considered giving these volunteers any training or, you know, just a brief box top talk on health and safety. That hadn't been done. So from the insurance point of view, that was a claim that Leicester City Council had to pay. Because if someone is injured, even the volunteer, it doesn't mean they're volunteering to get injured. And if they've got lives where their earnings are going to be affected because they've been injured, volunteering for your event, or it ruins their holiday, or they can no longer play the piano, the amount of people who are injured, especially injured their hands, who can no longer play the piano, you'd be amazed at. So make sure there is some sort of training for your volunteers, the same as you would of your own employees, because they will make a claim if they're injured. Not all of them, but most of them will. Waste disposal, again, it's bad publicity. If the local paper goes to your event the day after and films the park covered in litter and rubbish and that kind of thing. So again, make sure you've considered how the waste is going to be disposed of. And obviously, maybe taking into account different types of waste as well, so that you can maybe make sure it's not all just chucked on a landfill site. So consider that as well. Again, you probably want to use volunteers, so volunteers should be given the correct equipment, the pickers that they have, so that they don't injure their back bending down, backwards and forwards, that they're told not to pick up any heavy boxes of bins, that kind of thing, so that manual handling, they don't get back strains. Back strains is one of the most common injuries I see for employees. And there's no difference at an event. So please consider how the waste is going to be disposed of. Are you going to get the local waste company or the council authority people to do an extra pickup that day or the day after, to make sure that the litter is removed as soon as possible? So consider the waste as well. Contractors, a lot of large events, you need contractors. So you need people who are maybe assembling the stage or putting up the fencing or the crowd management company. Contractors do get involved in these events, particularly the larger they get. Now, I would make sure when you are looking at contractors, that you ask around to make sure that you get bona fide a company and also that you check their insurance details. They, it won't be a question, they'll be surprised at you asking. What you're trying to cover there is if the contractors cause an incident, they collide with somebody on the park, or they injure somebody, or the fence falls down, that they've got insurance to cover the event. You don't want a claim landing on your door for something that's not your fault, contractor's fault. So make sure that you check their insurance details. And if they've got any risk assessments or method statements to how they intend to do the work as well, ask to see those. If they're surprised by you asking that, then I think it may be a company you shouldn't be dealing with. Because all contractors nowadays are expected to provide risk assessments and their insurance details. So make sure that anyone you employ in relation to the event, that you do check out that they have the necessary paperwork. The weather, which is probably one of the most important things, to be honest with you, with events. We all want nice weather on the day, but we live in Great Britain and you can never guarantee what the weather's going to be like. So I've been to events where they were expecting hot weather. So cream was available to all the people who were attending. That's probably one extreme, and I've only come across that a couple of times. Rain and stormy weather is important, because I mentioned the car parks, but also the site where you're running the event. If there's going to be a lot of mud, are you going to have matting down? Are you going to have safe passages that people could go to avoid all the muddied areas? Wind is important because of bouncy castles from inflatables. I did a quick check this morning on cases involving injuries to people on bouncy castles. And the last 20 years has been 30 deaths on bouncy castles. And 10,000 injuries a year relating to bouncy castles. Now, first time someone is injured on a bouncy castle, it's not the child's fault or the parent's fault, it's going to be whoever's organising. It's going to be the bouncy castle owner's fault, it's going to be the council's fault. It's never, never the child's fault, leaping around, doing what they shouldn't be doing. So make sure that if you hire in a bouncy castle, that contractor has the correct insurance. But also, what are they doing about the weather? There's been some high-profile cases. In 2016, there was one in Essex where a seven-year-old girl died when a bouncy castle blew away. If you looked at the weather, it was expected to be high winds on that day, but they proceeded with, the event organiser proceeded with the event with a bouncy castle. And ended up, two workers were then found guilty of manslaughter by gross negligence and ended up in jail for three years, purely because they either didn't take into account what the weather's going to be like, or they did, but proceeded with running the bouncy castle, even knowing that the weather was going to be quite stormy. So correctly, two people were found guilty of, the organisers of the bouncy castle, they were, were found guilty. But there's been many incidents like that. were found guilty, but there's been many incidents like that throughout the world where people have been injured. And I always, when someone said they're running an event, they're going to have a bouncy castle, I always went a bit, oh, like that. And um, I don't want to ruin kids' fun, because kids really enjoy that kind of um, that kind of a, a feature at an event. But that is one of the high areas for injuries and potential problems. But the point I'm getting at there is, what about the weather? Now, obviously, when you plan the event months before, you've got no idea. But you need somebody who is keeping an eye on the weather. Um, forecasters are fairly good nowadays, so a week, three or four days before an event, you're going to know a rough idea what the weather's going to be like. So is there any stalls or events you're going to need to not run because of the, the predicted bad weather? Are you going to cancel the event completely, or is someone going to make a decision on that day? You need some sort of plan of what you're going to do in respect of the, the weather that is expected on that day. Um, and just to leave it, not, not take that into account, and then you get uh, inflatables or something blown away. Um, then that's going to look bad on, on you as the organizer if you've not taken that into account. So the weather should be something that will be on your risk assessment. Um, before I get on to risk assessments, the, the other thing you should do is, after the event, successful or not, have a debrief with those people who organized it. What went wrong, what went right? Um, are you planning to do it again next year? If so, um, you know, what lessons have you learnt? From um, uh, the debrief. So sit, get together with the organizers and say, right, what went wrong, what went right? Is there, has there been any complaints? Has there been any injuries that we need to report to insurers, that kind of thing? And how can we make sure if we run it again next year, that it's going to be even better? So uh, always have a debrief, even if the, everything went swimmingly, then get together and say, well done, you know. And make sure that you, you run the event the same the following year. Um, so it is, it is um, important to have, to have that, and then amend the risk assessment accordingly. Now, um, I, I, I believe uh, the risk assessment that um, I um, sent to John has been sent out to you all. Um, and on the face of it, it looks a bit chunky, but I've put on there just the standard things I would expect when you're running an event to have. Now, if they're not relevant to your particular event, then just, just remove them. This, this is your risk assessment when you do an event. Um, and I'm normally very loathe to hand out ones that are fully populated, because I normally like to say, well, these are the hazards, now it's up to you to, to populate the, the rest of it. Um, because there is that um, uh, potential for someone to say, right, I've got the risk assessment, I'll put it such and such an event on whatever day, and that's it. I, I like people to populate it themselves, to be honest with you, so um, normally going against a grain of what I've done here, but I wanted to show and populate it with the things that you should be looking at when you're running an event, and delete those that aren't relevant to you. But also add into these things that are not on here. So if you're running, say, um, a Christmas event, you're going to have reindeers, then, then put reindeers and what you're going to do about that. I've been to events where, particularly Indian festivals, where they've had elephants um, on parade, so add in these extra things that are particular to your event. Uh, because it, you, you can't have a standard risk assessment and say, right, that's it. Every event is different, every location's different, the size is different. Um, and the weather's different, everything. So, um, please make sure that this is your own document and amend it accordingly and, and add and take away things. So we look at, first thing you do when you do a risk assessment is the hazards and risks. What are the things that could go wrong? Um, and if you go through the, the risk assessment, slips, trips and falls are probably the, the biggest thing. So what are you doing in respect of uh, reducing that, that hazard? Um, I've also got on here, uh, physical hazards, which is why you should look at the site. Is there anything on the site which can cause additional problems? Manual handling, I touched on briefly, uh, in respect of people who are probably not used to carrying heavy items because they're volunteered. Um, who um, may need manual handling training, or you may need to put in some, some measures to make sure people don't have to pick up large bins, et cetera, uh, or move heavy equipment around. So manual handling is an issue, weather is a specific issue, um, a hazard for events. Um, uh, you could get a nice, nice day and it doesn't have any effect at all, but you need to have that in your risk assessment to have someone to be looking at any, any likely changes in weather. I put equipment and electrical failure, um, natural hazards, uh, first aid emergency. So all the type of things I would normally expect to see on a risk assessment, and I do get uh, quite a few risk assessments. So I've seen a few risk assessments for um, events uh, for King's Coronation and um, I never criticise people for their doing their own risk assessment, um, because that shows to me that they, it's their own work. Um, and I never say you must use this format, or you must use a certain format. Um, because I, I prefer people to, to um, um, do their own thing and make sure it's their own risk assessment. So I'll never say, no, use this format, uh, unless they ask me for that in the first place. Um, so who is at risk? Well, that's obviously going to be members of the public when you're running an event. Your own employees who are helping you out, volunteers and contractors if you've used those. Um, what control measures have you got in place? You may have control measures um, that you've put in place, so um, I just saw one there, making sure you've got insurance to cover the event. Um, uh, on slips, trips and falls, look out for uneven services and make sure they're taped off or buried off, that, that kind of thing. So I always, on a risk assessment, you will see what measures you've put in place. And then what additional measures should you be doing? You, you've been around, uh, you've had a look at the site and you think it would be useful if extra uh, measures were put in place. So um, uh, let me see what else I've, I've put on here as an additional thing. Um, you may want to do a frequent walk when you're running the event. Obviously, I would expect you to go and have a look at the, the location uh, before it starts on that day. But then you may decide to uh, have a, have a walk through every hour or so to, to make sure that nothing's happening, uh, that shouldn't be happening. Um, then I've put at the end of that, um, a, a risk rating, again. The, the only reason I would really want a risk rating on there is, um, if you've got that many risks and hazards that you need to triage them, so you, you can focus on those that are high or medium first, before you start looking at the low one. So if you're doing a fairly straightforward risk assessment with five or six hazards, then maybe you don't need the rating high, low, medium. I've put that in there to show that if, if your risk assessment is getting larger and larger, you may want to focus on those that are high risk first, if your time or your budget is limited, and then work your way down to medium and then on to low. So um, that's, that's the uh, risk assessment. Please date it, please put a name on it, and please put a review date on. Um, I saw one that's come through this week, which has got a review date regular, it says on it. That would not really be much use in defence of an incident if um, someone put that they're going to review it regularly. What, what does regular mean? Is that, is that weekly? Is that annually? Um, so make sure there is a review date on, and then diary yourself to make sure that you review your, your risk assessment if you run the event next year. If the event is exactly the same as the previous year, there shouldn't be much change uh, to your risk assessment, but you may be increasing the size of it, you may be moving to a different location. Um, so you may need to, to renew your, yeah, review your risk assessment and actually amend it, depending on what changes there's been. Um, I've seen quite a lot of questions come up, so uh, I'm going to leave the presentation there, so so John can fire some questions um, at me that, that have come through, because it was flicking up quite a lot. Oh, I think you're on mute, John.
Trying to find my mouse button. Yes, I was on mute. School, schoolboy error. Right, yes, so we've been having lots of questions. I welcome people to come, uh, to, uh, to ask the questions, so unmute yourself and turn on your camera. Um, I've got a few I've been collecting, so Tina, you've asked a question, feel free to ask it. Uh, you can, yeah, unmute yourself and turn on your camera.
Okay, um, hi, sorry. I just wanted to ask about Martin's Law, it'd been mentioned. I've heard it in the past and I haven't really found much about it online, and I just wondered what we needed to do about it. I don't know if it's law yet, but just wanted a bit more information and sort of the implications, especially because we're, we're having an outdoor event. Just wanted some advice about it, please.
Okay, remind me what Martin's Law is, because there's that many laws around with names.
Yeah, well, that's what I really wanted to find. I think it's related to terrorism, but I'm not entirely sure. That's what I was hoping you might be able to help us about.
Yeah, Gaynor asked a question as well, related terrorism and risk assessment associated to that. But I believe Martin's Law is associated with Manchester um, arena. Um, yeah.
Is it with emergency services, that kind of thing, or, or um, uh, because I'm obviously aware of the Prevent Programme that the council's uh, have been involved in for probably ten or so years now. Um, but uh, Martin's Law is, is a new one for me, but yeah, I, I do think it's relating to Manchester, but I'd need to have a look at that, that beforehand, because it's not something um, that I'm, I've been involved in at all.
Cool. Um, yeah, what about generally about terrorism and risk assessment? So particularly some of the big events that you've organised, did, is, did that come up when you're doing risk assessment, you know, for the big, big concerts?
Um, yes, it, it's always been there. Um, obviously, um, I, I think the Manchester event was probably after I'd left Leicester City Council, so I don't know whether they, they took, they took more involvement in, but um, with the um, the royal events that we had, because we had members of royalty uh, attending the cathedral and things like that, the um, the, the royal, royalty had their own uh, protection squad who briefed us all on terrorism and what we should be doing, things like that. But it was really um, making sure that uh, advice was going out to all those attending to be on the lookout, to report packages, to report anything suspicious, that, that kind of thing. Um, so really, i- it's um, uh, you, you've always got to be aware of terrorism, but we, we don't want to stop any events just because of it. You, you may have particularly high risk, uh, that may be more attractive to terrorism ones, so e- even Diwali, there is that risk of other, other um, um, you know, of issues occurring there. Um, and obviously, music events, it was never really an issue then, so you, you know.
Anthony, Anthony Dawes did chime in saying it is pending UK, UK-wide legislation, it's just that you've got to consider it. Um, if you're, uh, if you, if your event is publicly accessible and put appropriate mitigations in place. Um, okay, uh, we, Gaynor, you had, are you there? Gaynor White?
Yes, hi John.
Do I, uh, you're right. Um, do you have some more questions, you, about bouncy castles or?
Yeah, we've got a village or uh, association that's very keen to have bouncy castles. We didn't really want them because of the big issue that Woking Borough Council had, where an infatible collapsed at an event and there were a lot of injured children. The association's been very persistent and has said, well, there's nothing in Health and Safety Executive says you can't. Our insurers don't prevent it. The parish council's insurers have said, as long as there's less than two thousand people, should be fine. We've gone through and checked everything we think they would need to have, especially the weather conditions. Being acutely aware of if they fly away, you can have terrible consequences. I just wanted to know, if we are the lessees of the land on which the event is being held, can we on the day say the weather is due to be very severe, you cannot operate this bouncy castle?
Uh, well, yeah, uh, uh, if it's an event you're involved in, the organisers of it all, then you, you would have that, you would have that say. Um, what, what you should be doing is make sure that the, if it's an outside contractors who own the bouncy castle, they check all their insurance details and what risk assessments they've got.
Done that already.
Yeah, exactly. And I don't want to come across a person who stops events merely because there's a slight bit of risk, you know. Um, children do enjoy them, they are, they do bring in crowds and they make money and things like that. So I don't want to, I've only stopped one event ever in my forty four years, I'll have to work it out, sorry again. And that, that was when, sorry, two events. Um, one where a, a, a group of groundies were given a load of fireworks to let off. Uh, and they wanted to use one of our parks, and um, that was dangerous. Another one was a firewalking to raise money for Tsunami, where the local college says we're going to get all the pupils to sign forms to say they won't sue the council in the event of, of getting burnt. So um, I, I will never stop events, that, you know, there can be risk assessed, okay. And it sounds like you're going to do everything that you can in, in, um, uh, to ensure a safe event, but what you should do is, um, presumably you're attending the event, i- is make sure that if the weather is expected to be bad, that they are doing something extra about it. They are either closing it down or they're putting extra uh, secure lines in place or, or, or whatever.
Well, question from Sam related to it, um, is if something did happen, if an accident did happen with bouncy castles, would the parish council be liable, or is it just the bouncy castle company?
Um, initially, it should go on the, the bouncy castle, but a, a solicitor will hit everybody whose involvement, so they will, they will do the landowner, the, the, the organizer and the bouncy castle, because it's the old adage, they throw as much mud as possible and see where it sticks. So you will still, you can still get involved in a claim, even though after investigation it may mean it's not your negligence, it's the bouncy castle owner or nobody, because accidents do happen. I know solicitors don't agree with that, but, um, so it does depend on the actual circumstances. But you could get a situation where a council had let a company on site and they'd not checked risk assessments. They'd um, uh, not checked the weather, and then something had happened, and you could probably say that the council to some degree were negligent. Particularly if that bouncy castle company had no insurance and the council hadn't checked it. Um, so, y- you know, you could get attracted to negligence if, if they didn't do some of the things which I mentioned today.
Okay, uh, sorry if I didn't cut you off, did I, Gaynor? You weren't asking another question there, um. But uh, yes, there was one more thing from, uh, yeah, about bouncy castles, very popular, erecting inside a large village hall. Does that sound okay?
Well, again, that rules out the uh, weather element, so um,
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, um, that, that's the main thing, of them blowing away in, in the wind, uh. Um, um, so inside, it's a lot safer. You're still going to get injuries, people bouncing around, that kind of thing. But a lot safer.
Uh, tug of war, uh, Alison. Alison, are you there?
I am, yes, sorry, I, I haven't got a camera on. Our councillors are desperate to do a tug of war competition at the coronation event. There's quite a few um, people interested in the town. It's going to be on grass, obviously, um. I, I, I just really don't know how to, how to assess it.
Um, yeah, well, okay, you, uh, weather can be an issue. If you, if you've got wet weather, then it's going to be a lot more uh, scope for slipping and injuries, that kind of thing. Um, I'm sure there's probably on the internet some sort of tug of war, tug of war risk assessment. I've never looked for one myself, but I'm sure there will be some, something on there. Um, but I, I, I think it probably needs some sort of talk just beforehand to the contestants to say, look, um, this is a, uh, an amateur event, uh, please follow any instructions you're given closely. Um, and when we say it's over, it's over, you know, please then, you know, drop, drop the rope, that kind of thing. Um, I've never come across any injuries for a tug of war. Uh, but then it's probably because there's not, not been that many. But do a risk assessment, um, so that what measures do need being put in place, can, can be put in place, but the, the weather is the most important one regards to, um, you know, it being muddy conditions or whatever. Mind you, if it's muddy conditions, it might be safer, so.
O, O M G, but uh, there is a tug of war association. There is association for everything. Good. Anyone doing anything dangerous, like fire eating or abseiling or?
So, John, as my just was just to pop in there, I did put a, a note on the chat in response to the tug of war. It sounds similar to a situation to one that we had last year when we, uh, when we ran a community fair. Uh, well, we had a water slide. Now, that, as it turned out, was not covered by the standard terms of our public liability policy. We had to, we needed to advise our insurance company that we were holding it, describe it, uh, get it added to the policy specifically for the, uh, that day, and they charged us an extra hundred pounds. I have a feeling a tug of war might well fit into that same category.
Okay, thanks, Don.
So do check with insurers for anything that's a little bit slippery, risky, make sure you're covered.
Oh, Bob, Bob Bailey did say they, that one of their councillors broke their ankle in the tug of war.
Oh.
Oh dear, um, obviously, uh, quite competitive, I'd say. Um, dog show, is there a risk assessment for dog show?
There, there are risk assessments for everything on the planet, so um, there, there will be one out there, um. Uh, I, I do remember seeing one for um, a village in Leicestershire, uh, specifically. I think if, if there's um, if there's a large number of questions coming through, John, just forward them on to me, I'm quite happy to answer them, you know.
Oh yeah, I, I lost track of time, I lost track of time. Oh yeah, we're already at time, um.
But there, there is, there will be a, to answer. But there there is, there will be, to answer that question, there will be a dog risk assessment. And to start off with, i- if you don't want to start from scratch or you, you know. You you um then look on the internet, there will be risk assessments. Don't go the ones where you've got to pay for it. There are plenty of free templates out there. Uh ask your brokers or your insurers um uh if you if you still struggle um to get them. There there's plenty of help out there.
Okay, let's do a team selfie. So please turn on your cameras. We'll do our team selfie. To wave to uh Brian, to thank him for all his efforts. So I'm going to get ready to take the shot. Put all your cameras on, everybody. Wave, smile, look good and say thanks to Brian. Cheers, Brian. Thanks for all your talk today.
Thank you. Cheers.
Excellent. Okay, well, we'll follow up, we'll send an email, send a recording of it. Jess will probably write a blog post. Um and we'll share the slides if that's okay with you, Brian, and your.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, all right.
Take it easy, everybody. Cheers. Bye bye.